Please go ahead and order the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one Land School Zoning Board and Appeals meeting. First in our business, the minutes from our August sixteenth meeting. I make the motion to approve the minutes as recorded. Go ahead, second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the unanimous vote. Old Business is evening, Area variance twenty-one dash zero zero three three, Larry Clute, contract pen D for Antonio Marriott at forty-four Arbor Drive. Is there someone here? Is Larry here? Please come up and state your name for the record.
Hi, Larry Clute, representing Arbor Drive, Damian.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us about what you're planning to do here?
The short of it, we did a barter lot-wise with Antonio, and so I treat this lot like I would any other. I evaluated it and determined a couple of designs that fit the lot. During that process, some people made some recommendations or encouraged a more neighborhood-friendly design. Unfortunately, with a lot size, it's kind of restrictive, which forces the variance application. But in all right, the design that we're proposing is much more neighborhood-friendly, but not necessary, so honestly, it's up to the board.
So, as I understand, the variances that were previously granted, you could go ahead and build today without any variance needed?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I already have a building permit. Yes, sir.
And what specifically are you seeking and why?
As I described, the home that requires the variance is much more neighborhood, specific neighborhood-friendly to that neighborhood. It would fit the neighborhood better.
Could you give a little more characteristics?
Sure, I guess, yeah, I mean, I've got front elevations of what we propose. Generally speaking, none of the homes in that neighborhood meet the current setbacks. It's kind of like they're all pre-existing non-conforming to the current zoning, so our opinion is that if we actually meet the setbacks, which we're capable of doing with the home that we proposed, it would ultimately stand out in an already existing neighborhood, and we're trying to kind of create a home that looks like it's always been there. So, that's essentially kind of the thought process. It's more about aesthetics and maintaining the kind of community feel that was already in place in Arbor Drive. And as we said, we already have the building permit in place for the smaller of the two homes that we were hoping to do. We just need a bit more relief from the setbacks in place in addition to the ones that are already on file in order to allow for that home. So, I didn't actually bring enough, I've only got five, but you're welcome to take a look. This is the home that we're proposing with variance, and this is the one that we have the building permit for.
I've got five copies of each. This is the one we're proposing, this is the one I have a permit for. There's five.
And it's also about maintaining values in that neighborhood as well. The larger of the two homes would retail around four thousand, the smaller would be certainly below three.
The two stories, the one you're going for the variance?
Correct.
It is, sir, yes.
Put up, go on to the copy, Chris.
Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna do the copy for the remaining, so. So, this is what you can build today, and this is what you're proposing?
Correct, yes, sir.
Questions, want me to?
Uh, I just didn't see the proposed.
Oh, here.
Okay.
So, I see the proposed is permitted.
It has the opposite.
I see that.
So, when you say neighborhood-friendly, you're saying this is more like what's existing?
Correct. Values as well as aesthetics, yes. It's kind of eclectic in there, to be honest with you, what the values are at a certain point, and so the two-story would be of better value neighborhood-wise as well as homeownership-wise over the single-story.
So, if I understand correctly, you guys were granted a variance already?
It wasn't ours, it was the previous, the previous landowner, correct, was able to obtain a variance for that lot. I believe he had done a sort of lot line adjustment to the neighbor at the rear, and in doing so, he was able to secure a further variance, the initial variance that's on file there. I believe they had done a lot line adjustment to allow for the neighbor in the rear to, I guess, have some more space for their shed in their rear yard. I'm not sure of the logistics or the rationale behind it, but I do know that in seeking the initial variance, it was in the same timeframe as getting their lot line adjustment to the rear property line.
I thought it was to the side yard, you guys got a variance from fifteen to twelve?
It's both. It's the rear and the sides, I believe, um, just a moment here.
It was, or was it a grant at the same time?
Correct, yes, correct.
They granted side yard relief, then they reduced the lot size.
Yes.
So, could you explain to me number two on the variance when you, sorry, now I have to say it. How is this, it's a self-created hardship?
It wasn't us that had done it, it was the previous owner. So, I mean, we had purchased it, and it was in the condition as we're describing now when we had purchased it.
So, but purchased it knowing that this is the condition of the lot?
And I didn't have any problem with that, that's why I submitted for the permit, I have the permit.
Correct.
Okay, don't just ask it for the application.
Understood, completely.
Yep, understood, exactly.
But I, but I just, I guess, carrying my thoughts, so the owner of the part of the property right now is a totally different owner from two thousand seventeen?
As of now, as of today, we're saying yes. When I had applied for the variance, we were still in the process of, we hadn't actually closed on the property yet, so technically speaking, Antonio was still the owner. At this point, we are currently owners.
Okay, so then at this point, to me, this is a totally new, should be a totally new application, and the previous relief of five feet is null void because we have your application. So, when we, when we speak to the relief, whether approved or denied, it should be in the context of the request from fifteen feet, not from ten feet. That's what I think.
Correct, except the fact that the prior variance still runs with the land, that prior variance didn't.
So, the, yeah, they have the relief from what we originally granted back in two thousand seventeen, which was three point five feet. They proposed each side of, I believe, six and a half feet, which was granted. So, now, I'm sorry, right now they're requesting three and a half.
So, from fifteen to ten, from two thousand seventeen, and at this stage with the land that will be on?
Correct.
But to your point, if you look at this cumulatively, it's a three and a half foot relief from something like that, so over fifty percent.
Can I ask if the smaller of the two houses, does that take, what is the setback estimate? Is it ten?
Of what now? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, the smaller of the two.
Yes, if it's the approved variance that's been riding with the lot.
Understood.
So, you're looking for a total of seven more feet, or three and a half feet on each side?
To accommodate the larger home, yes, sir.
How many more square feet does that give you over the home on the lot as it is today?
The, the home?
Yeah, the home, so.
Roughly four to five hundred foot larger than what I have a permit for. The nice thing of the design as well is the lot is restrictive, that's obvious, that's why not only myself, previous owner, another buyer, all of them have come for variances. So, the lot is very restrictive. Most people want garages. In order for that to happen, you need, you gotta have sides. The new design that I proposed has that garage to the front. The other design, it just, it's just not a possibility to make it happen. So, trying to take everything into consideration, that's what we're doing. Not necessary, but that's what we're doing.
With the larger size footprint, you're still within the lot coverage or below the lot coverage?
Yes, sir. Two-story, so it reduces that footprint. If it had been a ranch, it, that'd have been a different story. But two-story reduced our footprint size.
Is that why the original application, you had the lot coverage as part of the variance request?
Yes, sir.
It was also to allow.
Originally as in?
It was also trying to be conscious of potential development by a new landowner. I mean, say somebody were to buy the home and then want to put a covered deck on the yard that wasn't originally proposed with our building permit, we wanted to allow them to do that without needing to kind of come in front of the board to do that again. So, it's really just to allow some additional wiggle room, it was not necessary, hence us removing them.
Are you saying that's for the larger one?
Say that again? Oh, no, that was for, it was just for anything, the larger one, the smaller one, that was in the initial variance application you're referring to, had us, like, seeking relief as far as the lot coverage goes, and again, it was just to allow some extra wiggle room in the event that somebody wanted to add something that we hadn't proposed originally in the building.
It was my understanding that the previous had asked from, to go from thirty to forty percent?
We removed that.
What's that?
We removed our, our, our request to have the lot coverage taken that off, so it's, that's no longer.
We need the coverage.
Yeah, that's no longer.
The current or the?
Yeah, with the, with the, with both, yes.
Okay.
We tried to anticipate, I've been doing this for a long time, so we tried to anticipate client demands, and as Damian said, people might ask for a deck or such, that being presented causes an issue as far as that coverage that we're discussing. So, we were trying to anticipate irrelevant of what permit I'm going after. It, it's very critical because the lot size is small.
Chris, did you ever come?
Yeah, I did. Originally, I would go lot size to the lot coverage, I totally needed it, and then when they got the exact plans, we had to put, we actually counted out the square footage, we found out he was actually under the lot size requirement or the lot coverage requirement. So, that actually was initiated through my office and then rescinded from my office.
So, the lot coverage is thirty percent of lots?
Yes, sir.
So, the only thing we saw here is three point five feet?
Side yard setback.
On the side yard setback, and additionally, what was there we granted prior?
Yes, sir.
If that's the case, our secret form is incorrect and needs to be updated before we, we take that.
Which number did you say?
Just the project description in general, it states that a variance is requested for a lot coverage.
And then even here, it's a few days earlier.
Yeah.
It's part of.
Then additionally, question five, is it permitted under zoning? We wouldn't be here if the answer was yes. Number five, please.
Well, if it isn't permitted, you just take that.
Yeah.
Well, just reading that, the variance request is three point five feet, and this is variance request for side yard setback of six point five on either side.
Depends on how you look at it, whether you're looking at it as a new application, you would be asking from the fifteen, or whether it would be asking from the ten that's already in the property. That's really the key question of whether we're going to.
So, the secret is the same from the two applications, so that page one, it actually is, you cannot actually have them do the secret.
So, the original setback was fifteen feet, the board granted it to be five feet, maybe ten or ten feet on each side, and now the question is really on three and a half additional feet on each side. Is there anybody here from the community that wants us to speak about this application? Do you want to excuse yourself?
Yes, sir.
Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hello.
Hello. Could you say your name and address for the record, please?
Lucia, I have my initial V as in boy and Rico, this is five six Arbor Drive.
Thank you.
Glitzholtz.
I'm sorry, did you say twenty-six Arbor Drive?
No, forty-six.
Forty-six.
Four.
Forty-six, got it, thank you.
You do allow my neighbor and my friend to talk in my behalf, please?
Sure.
Mister Tom, because we speak about all the time, he got his letter on today, but he knows what I want. Marshal of the things I don't understand, I just came from New York, I live here, just three and a half, so would you please let me represent me, whatever you say?
Well, you guys are here, I'm sure that you guys will.
Let me, so let's say.
My name's Tom Brew, and I live across the road from Lucia at forty-one Arbor, and we were here previously at the August meeting and talked about it. And the major concern that both of us have, and unfortunately, the lady Gina Mamon on the other side could not be here tonight, just for your information, half of the letters that you sent out didn't show up until today, so many of us didn't know this hearing was on until about three, four o'clock, seven, and we got our afternoon mail. So, that's why maybe the attendance is a little low on this because some of us didn't get our notices, but. And the question being, I guess, is that we've heard the conversations tonight about the fact that the original amendment was for the ten feet from fifteen, which in essence, we don't really have a problem with. The issue that we're worried about, or we're concerned especially with Lucia, is the fact that if the extra three and a half feet on either side is awarded, anybody who has seen that lot, and I believe you've seen it, there are large pines, and we're not sure if the new builder or the builder intends to take all those trees down, because if he does, doesn't, if you give him the three and a half foot variance, how is anybody going to be able to access the back of that property without either encroaching upon hers or Gina Mamon's on the other side? Because I'm assuming that if you go to six and a half feet, somebody's going to get their property run over if you've got to go behind in order to take care of the issues. So, for all intents and purposes, you know, we thought that the ten-foot probably, we weren't thrilled about that when it happened a couple of years ago, but obviously, we realize something's going to get built on that piece of property. And we're only concerned that if the ten-foot doesn't stand, then we've got an issue that there's no access to the back of the property unless all of the trees are taken down, because there's rather large white pines in the front, and there's also large white pines in the back that need to be addressed, because once the house is built, what's going to happen? How are you going to do this? So, I guess, unless Lucia has something else to add to that, I think that's where we're at with the neighborhood right there, because obviously, we want a decent house there, we know something's going to get built, we would like something that does match our neighborhood and does look like it belongs there.
Yeah, have you seen?
No, we have not.
So, I believe this is what could be built today with the existing variance, and this is the house they would propose if granted the extra of, of mistaking that as a correct area. So, that's, that's what they're proposing, if you move on. But if I understand, your concern is once that side yard is taken up, there's no more than ten feet, if there's an issue with the trees in the back, there's no way to get back there without encroaching on either neighbor's property.
Correct, right, because there's no access, I believe, from Webster, because that was one of the reasons that the prior homeowner, Mr. Piore, had the property changed around because he couldn't get through to the backside of that property either, and then when he sold the property, obviously, it got split. So, the gentleman sold the house to another owner, and now the lot has gone to Mr. Clute, so the lot basically has to stand on its own merits, and that's what we're worried about, that, you know, there's going to be issues, especially sodlet issues, as well as what's going to happen to the trees and whatever on the lot as it is. So, that, I think is primarily our concerns.
Sure. It's basically a fully wooded lot.
What's that?
It's basically a foot, fully wooded lot, I mean, it's.
It was, missed the prior Antonio, whatever his last name, he logged a majority of it, but he left all the border trees, and there was four or five large white pines that he didn't drop. He did drop about eight of the larger trees on the lot, there was no stump work done, so the lot is quite rough.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you for your comments and anything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for the audience? I guess we could ask them if they have any intentions of what they're doing to the tree before they built the house. Yeah, I think you may have heard their concerns, do you have anything you'd like to add, the concerns they raised about the trees in the lot?
Yeah, as you're aware, the most city lots are roughly fifty feet, so all city lots have problematic access, the majority of them, but getting into the backyard of this particular lot, being that a lot line adjustment was made, it's a, it's a minimal debt lot to begin with. If I go in there and clear, I'm going to make sure it's just border trees that are left, just so there is some sort of buffer, but it has to be border trees. If there's anything within the lot, they're coming down, otherwise, they would encroach on any development that were put into the, put into area, and they're right, they would have to come down previous to any kind of development, any kind of house. And there is a couple that are in to the lot, but the ones that are on the lines, they would just be, for the best of our ability, we try and keep them as buffer trees.
Yeah, I know, I wouldn't say that the majority of the lots are fifty foot, I know on that street, they're much wider than fifty foot, I think, on Arbor.
I think a lot of them are narrow, but I'm just saying the majority of city lots, I didn't really specify Arbor, I just, I've done a lot of city lots. Even my new constructor, sixty-five foot, they're very restrictive. City lots are narrow, and that's typical, it's a city.
Typical, yeah, in the city, throughout the city, it's typical, but Arbor, you know, these are the Arbor line, I feel like they're wider, you know, at least the intent was that there was going to be some wider lots, since we go further out from the city.
I agree, I agree.
So, that's, I mean, and you have the lot, and the lot is one of those, so that's another point, but.
No, I understand it completely.
Are there any final questions for the applicant? And for the record, this is secret tech two, so no.
Residential setback.
No action required.
I don't know which way the board is leaning if you were to grant the variance, you could certainly consider putting conditions upon it, if, for example, you were granting it because you're looking at the diagrams and you want to draw, look at the size, or maybe consider what you've seen, which is a line, or anything else that you want a condition that would help.
I, I think the only thing that I've been going is that maybe there's an analysis from a tree expert that would see if there are any trees around them further that need to be taken down in the near future, and then that might be a condition to get there, because you can't do it once it's built. That's the point, so maybe it's predetermined by a, a tree expert that says, that tree, you know, it's got five years before you're going to do something, like it's two years after this house is built.
I agree.
So, that could be a condition where it kind of appeases the neighbors, where they're concerned about how they're going to have to get on their own to take care of it.
It makes a lot of sense.
You're asking for an over risk to come check out the application for Arbor Drive?
I was just saying, might be a condition that would help both parties.
If, like, third party does not, knowing you have to do that. You've got to be very specific about what you want your proposal to be, it would be generally better to defend your request first, and then look at the data and decide what, if anything, you want to do with it.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable moving forward on this personally, I remember the last time this came before us, and we granted relief, a couple of changes, and now when we were sure at that time that our house could be built there, which we showed at ten, and here we are again asking for more relief and taking into consideration what the neighbors have concerned or, uh, shared their concerns.
I think that we've seen that three of the balancing test variables have not been met. This variance isn't necessary, the applicant has shown that they can build the house and achieve the means of building a house on this lot as it stands. It's certainly substantial, cumulatively, it's a, you know, well over fifty percent release, and it is a self-created hardship in my opinion, so I don't believe that this is not the balancing test of the area, the area variance.
Yeah, if you go through these, whether they're undesirable I didn't really specify Arbor, I just, I've done a lot of city lots. Even my new constructor, sixty-five foot, they're very restricted. City lots are narrow. And that's typical, it's a city lot.
Typical, yeah, um, in the city, throughout the city, it's typical, but Arbor, and, you know, these are the Arbor line. I feel like they're wider, you know, at least the intent was that there was going to be some wider lots since we go further out from the city center.
I agree, I agree.
So that's, I mean, and you have the lot, and the lot is one of those, so that's, that's a new point, but...
No, I understand it completely.
Are there any final questions for the applicant? And for the record, this is secret tech too, so no...
Residential stuff, uh...
No action required.
I don't know which way the board is leaning if you were to grant the variance. You could certainly consider putting conditions upon it. If, for example, you were granting it because you're looking at the diagrams and you want to draw, look at the size or, you know, consider what you've seen, which you're relying on, or anything else that you want to condition, that you know.
I, I think the only thing that I've been going is that maybe there's an analysis from a tree expert that would see if there are any trees around them further that need to be taken down in the near future, and then that might be a condition to be made. Because you can't do it once it's built, that's the point. So maybe it's predetermined by a, um, a tree expert that says, that tree, you know, it's got five years before you're going to do something, like it's two years after this house is built.
I agree.
So that could be a condition where the economy pieces the neighbors, where they're concerned about how they're going to have to get on their lawn to, to take care of it.
It makes a lot of sense.
You're asking for an arborist to come check out the application for arborist. I'm not, I'm not, I was just...
I, I was just saying, might be a condition that would help both parties.
If, like, third parties not, knowing you have to do that. Parts to that, you, you've got to be very specific about what's your, what's your... It would be generally better to defend the request first and then look at the data and decide what, if anything, you want to do with it.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable moving forward on this personally. Uh, I remember the last time this came before us and, uh, we granted relief, uh, a couple of changes. And now when we were sure at that time that our house could be built there, which we showed at ten, and here we are again, asking for more relief and taking into consideration what the neighbors, uh, have concerned or, uh, uh, shared their concerns.
I think that we've seen that three of the balancing test of variables have not been met. Um, this variance isn't necessary, the applicant has shown that they can build the house and achieve the means of building a house on this lot as, as it stands. It's certainly substantial cumulatively, that's a, you know, well over fifty percent release. And it is a self-created hardship in my opinion, so, I, I don't believe that this isn't the balancing test of the area, of the area variance.
Yeah, if you go through these, whether undesirable change would reduce the character of the neighborhood or detriments nearby properties will be created, whether you get granting variance. Uh, I think the concerns raised by the applicant or by the neighbors shows it could be a detriment. Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by the feasible method, uh, there is a house that could be built. It is substantial considering originally it was fifteen feet and now we're down to six and a half. Certainly it's self-created. Have any other comments from the board or, you know, how you feel about it?
Any other, other thing you consider, um, it's not super, but every time you reduce the setbacks inside of these, these properties, one of the key things of that is about fire spread, right? If there's a fire on this, you want to have a certain threshold between it so it doesn't just jump, jump, go. So there's a, there is a pragmatic number that starts to be so close that it's like they're essentially party walls. And then you need to have fire rated things and stuff like that.
There's certain setbacks within the city that are five foot, you got five foot, you got eight foot. It, it, and I guess it just depends on what area. This just happens to be a larger or a preferred larger area. If you look at the neighborhood, they're actually tight to the property lines.
Right, it's an Arbor line, yeah.
Yeah, Arbor's tight.
Yep.
Um, but...
Just happens to be a small lot in, absolutely, why not, yeah.
I agree.
That's for me, I would, I would approve this, uh, honestly, with the, uh, arborist. You know, I feel like the better, larger house, if most people would be living under the smaller, and I feel like that is, would be, uh, still moving to be with it, relatively less likely. Sounds like I'm making a memory.
It's all stacked, it's bad out here.
I thought maybe it was raining.
That's what it sounded like.
No further questions?
No.
Um, I would like to make a motion if the Glens Falls zoning board appeals about denying the application for area variance with project identified as area variance twenty-one dash zero zero three, three, Larry Clute, contract vendee, uh, for tax map number three oh two dab dot eleven dash six dash four, commonly known as forty-four Arbor Drive, uh, here today at the October eighteenth evening, Glens Falls zoning board appeals. It does seem like this would create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or more succinctly be a detriment to nearby properties. Uh, access variance is a cut off access to the backyard for any tree issues. The applicant could achieve this by other feasible means. We've seen a picture of a render in the house that could be built there. The area variance is substantial and taken in totality of what was granted prior, uh, it's well over fifty percent at least. Whether this would have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental condition of the neighborhood, I think that that's earlier spoken to. And this is a self-created, uh, issue. Although it would include the granting of variance, I think it does weigh into our decision. Do I have a second for the motion?
I think that one.
Okay, uh, let's do a roll call vote, we'll start over here with Mr. Magul. I'm going to say no. No? Mr. Bruce?
I would say no.
Is your, your voting against the motion, uh...
No, I'm voting for the motion to deny.
You're voting yes.
I voted no to go against the motion.
So we have one against the motion and one for the motion.
I'm a no.
So you're a no. I vote the A. I'm a yes. It's a no. No? No?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, the A's are four, the N's are three, the motion is approved.
We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is area variance twenty-one dab zero four zero four five, uh, Tom Elliott, contract vendee for Biggie Associates, under tax map three oh two dot two dab seven dab five, commonly known as forty, four twenty-eight Glen Street. I believe Mark Leback is here, Mark, would you state your name for the record, please?
Hello, Mark Leback.
Mark, why don't you walk us through your, uh, application?
Okay.
So I'm here this evening, uh, representing Tom Elliott as contract vendee on the sale of four twenty-eight Glen Street. And the building is currently a former, uh, cancer medical office on the first floor. It's been vacant for some time. And the second floor is two apartments. Um, the applicant, um, went before the city planning board and requested, um, relief on the number of parking spaces that are required. Number of parking spaces would be one point five, um, per apartment. So four apartments would require six parking spaces. And you made the case to the planning board that three tandem parking spaces really don't work, but two, uh, tandem spaces would work. So the intent here is to have one parking space per apartment, and one apartment would get two parking spaces. So in the event that you had two people living in one apartment, husband and wife, boyfriend, girlfriend, whatever, um, they would have the tandem spaces and they wouldn't be inconvenienced or inconvenienced one another if one had to run down and move the other person's car. So currently, in that area, there are three car, uh, there's like a three car parking lot there. And there's a bit of a dirt patch behind the house that you could call the fifth or the, the fourth parking spot. Um, the applicant intends on removing a Bilco door that's there and making proper parking, uh, that shows in this diagram, spaces one, two, three, four, and five. That was nice of the planning board to say that, you know, five spaces work better for this plan than six. And it leaves, uh, less blacktop and more of a backyard that the applicant plans on making into a, a garden space, um, for a, you know, uh, an outdoor area there. The, uh, first floor is a little over two thousand square feet, twenty-one hundred square feet. And the applicant would like to turn that into two apartments. Um, the front portion would be one apartment, the back portion would be a second apartment. And currently, there's some really nice old school woodworking in there with fireplace and, um, just some really nice, uh, old trim work. And the applicant proposes to preserve all of that, create a front apartment. And the back is quite sterile. There's nothing really architecturally redeeming about the back portion of the office. And we'd like to turn that into an apartment as well. So the economics really don't work for this project on, uh, a three apartment plan. Um, and they really don't work to create a two thousand plus square foot apartment in that location. Um, I did bring with me a map that shows the character of the neighborhood from a bird's eye view. If anybody cares to see that, um, you can see quite clearly that there is really more of a preponderance of apartments in the neighborhood than office. And I guess that, you know, the other point we'd like to make here this evening is that, um, office space is, uh, not in demand and affordable thousand square foot apartments in Glens Falls are. So for those reasons, the applicant would like, uh, to get relief from zoning. And I can go through the numbers, but I think you have those in your, uh, application that we submitted here this evening.
Mark, you do a lot with commercial real estate in Glens Falls. What is the state of the commercial real estate market right now in terms of vacancy and demand?
Well, the, currently, if we're just speaking to office here this evening, I did a little recent space study, there's about two hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of vacant, uh, class A and class B office space in the market. That, that number could be a little misleading in that some of that space is actually leased, but it's vacant. Um, examples like, uh, you know, some of the larger office footprints in the three thirty-three Glen Street, are leased but not occupied. The Nielsen, um, or the, you know, the Nielsen sixty-six thousand square foot building out at Media Drive, you, you know, they put the whole second floor, thirty-three thousand square feet up. Um, I believe they'll probably not be returning to that footprint and with any, uh, substantial, uh, reoccupation of even the ground floor there. They've already rented a portion of it to the Glens Falls Hospital that they'll occupy during their rehab of their Glen Street building. But, um, you know, that's, that's, that's equivalent to more space than exists in the three thirty-three Glen Street office tower. So, yeah, there's a lot of vacant office space out there right now. But there is leasing being done, you know, a lot of volatility in the market right now, tenants are downsizing, moving around. And, uh, we're optimistic that there'll be a saturation at some point, but I don't see it for several years. Or there's, I'm sorry, I should say there'd be an absorption to, uh, what the, what vacancies out there, but I don't see it for, for quite some time. And right now, there's absolutely a demand for affordable housing. Um, but I think the building, the character, the makeup of the building certainly lends itself to an apartment building. And really, I think it's a dog rated use because if that office were a busy office, more people could be visiting that office, more parking would be needed, more traffic would be needed, uh, or created. So I've, um, asked that the board see this as a minimal relief and grant the variance.
You say affordable housing, is this going to be affordable housing?
Not in the truest definition of the word, but it'll be workforce housing and as such would be an affordable rent. These are not proposed to be luxury apartments. Tom Elliott has a really nice design style and we're lucky to have him in Glens Falls. I recently sold him twelve Warren Street and he's remodeled that apartment. Um, and leases that out, uh, through an Airbnb model and uses the apartment for himself personally. And, uh, more recently, sold him the entire Antiques building. And he also purchased a, a tax, uh, foreclosed property in the city of Glens Falls, which he, I think it's on Sagamore Street, uh, proposing to really fix that up, renovate it, and sell it.
And if this is going to be an Airbnb?
Um, I don't know his intention for this space. I think his intention is to lease them out, uh, and not Airbnb them. But if he had, if he has one apartment in there or two that he chooses to Airbnb, I think that's his choice. But, um, he hasn't stated to me whether his intention is to go long-term or Airbnb.
You said the first floor is two thousand square feet, what's the second floor, is it the same?
It's pretty, the footprint's pretty much the same, yep. The first floor's a little larger than the second floor. There's, if you look in the back of the building, there's a bit of a bump out in the back that, uh, actually is a, a, also second story. I think the footprints are really quite similar, the first and second floor.
Okay, so you say that the reason it can't be three apartments is the economics of it. Can you talk about that at all?
Well, I, I don't think that, um, this location, the makeup of this property would lend itself to leasing a two thousand one hundred square foot apartment. It's just, there isn't any apartment in this immediate vicinity that's that size that I'm aware of. And like I said, we could go down through these other properties. I know most of them and I know they're all really small apartments there.
I have, uh, two concerns about this property. Um, one being the, I appreciate the reduced parking requirement, but the backing, backing up into Maryknabb and also, um, backing, having three car, four cars across, backing up into the, across the sidewalk, um, that currently, as it stands, it's terrible for pedestrians and adding more to this, I don't think is, um, a great situation. Um, also, I didn't, I haven't looked recently, but there's, in the Google Street View, there's garbage cans out into the public, the, the, you can see them from the street. That's a code violation.
Yeah, that's the current owners, that's the current...
Yeah, I'm just asking, what, is there a plan for garbage enclosures if there's additional living spaces added to this?
We could absolutely talk about that. I know this, um, person that I'm dealing with has, he's, he's a design person, he's a style person, he's somebody that really cares about what it looks like and how well it's built. And, um, I think his management, um, skills are all together there. Um, this will be an improvement over what's there. And currently, there are three, uh, cars abreast in that location currently. So I don't think that adding one more car to backing up under its current configuration is, 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 uh, much of an increase. But at the planning board, they were concerned that nothing encroached on the sidewalk. And the applicant agreed to not make any, these are economy vehicles that would be parking there. You can get a large SUV. And this applicant agreed to make sure that nothing encroached on the sidewalk.
He certainly can't control what his, uh, tenants drive.
Well, you, you, you can because they wouldn't be, lease the apartment if they had a vehicle that didn't follow the rules. And we've already stipulated that we're willing to make that a site plan rule, that if their car doesn't fit in that parking spot, then they won't be tenant renting that, uh, apartment or have that space.
They did put that in the minutes, uh, with the planning board's motion to grant the site plan review. There were a couple stipulations, one of which, as Mark mentioned, that the car is not overhanging. And the planning board was pretty clear, as I recall, to the applicant that this may affect who you could rent to, but the applicant is going to take that stipulation.
I guess just to go along, let's stick on the parking for a second. So what, what did the planning board approve after, I mean, are they, they're focused on the site design and the quantity?
So the planning board approved the site plan, of which was the proposed use and also the layout with the parking. And the picture, the diagram that you see that has the six spots of what was presented to the planning board. And then the request was to remove the spot number six.
Yep.
So the last one in. And the planning board granted relief from that. So essentially, the site plan was approved as depicted, taking off spot number six with the stipulation that, uh, none of the cars overhang the sidewalk. Second, I'll see what other stipulation was.
Vehicles parking space is not overhanging sidewalk and the applicant understands it's subject to any required zone variances.
I guess, I guess what I'm meaning with this is if you look at the off-street parking requirements, in the district there's no more in. I don't think parking within the side yard is permitted. Two twenty point two sixteen, very, very, parking derivative in the side yard and professional office district.
So if that, I would have to look at that. If they are required to get that variance, they would have to come back. And obviously, we couldn't grant that tonight because it hasn't been noticed. Now they have to go to the code office to review and then issue whether variance is needed. The board would still, if you want to consider this variance, this before you, it's just the density requirement. It's just the lots, I mean, just, we're just looking at the lot size of the building size.
Are you going to check that out right now? Yeah, I'm going to look it through here.
If you were to grant the variance, uh, on the density, it would not overrule whether any future variances are needed on the side yard or park. And you could certainly stipulate, not that they need the variance, but it's just a question for zoning, but, yes, you got variance and it's required.
Whatever the question, the question here.
Yeah. No, you're not doing that.
Uh, off-street parking and loading requirements, all uses permitted in this district are subject to parking loading requirements set forward in chap, in this chapter. There's no street parking loading.
I think it was two twenty point.
Twenty-six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I also don't know, I'm looking at it reviewing with codes, whether any of this side yard parking is granted or not.
Have the people parking there for a long time?
Not in four, five, and six, but in these other spots.
Really two, three, and four is the current, three cars across parking spaces. So you couldn't park on the north side, you couldn't park on the south side. The east side would be the front lawn, and there is no area in the back other than essentially almost the width of a, of a car back there driveway. So there really isn't a location to move the parking to. Um, you're, you're, you're looking at two sides. There's a little more room on the south side, but that would necessitate taking down trees and this applicant liked the fact that it had that oak or maple canopy, and his intention was to put patio back there under the trees. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't work for this applicant to look at parking anywhere other than what we're proposing, unfortunately.
And I guess just to clarify for what I said, I'm, I'm not necessarily saying I'm not in favor of where the parking is located, but I think we all know that parking in front yards and side yards is, you know, it, it's an issue that we see a lot. And I think moving forward, especially with this application, if there is an additional variance that's required, we should, you know, should there be?
Yeah. And, and of course, you're agreeing here, new and expanded uses, uh, except in the case of one or two common dwellings, no permission will be issued until such plan for parking and loading areas and access to them is approved by the planning board. The planning board should determine the traffic as planned with regard to safety and to traffic on public streets, the safety and efficacy of access for cars and pedestrians using the parking facility. So, uh, no certificate of occupancy should be issued to the building on hand, used until required off-street parking loading space has been established or in variances and granted, therefore, by the zoning board appeals.
Didn't they grant us?
Yeah.
That parking plan last?
I think in reading this.
I think there's another section of that, that references the planning board also making variance, which they have historically done in, in the city, but that is what the planning board looked at in the site plan review.
I would think the planning board did here meet what we wanted to.
Doesn't the fact that if, if those spaces front off of a city street add a little more credibility to the location of where they are? It's not really a side, um, a side that could be considered to be fronting on the area street, but it's not the primary, uh, physical front of the building. It's clearly the side of the building, but it's on a city street.
For me, if anything, I would actually label four or five the rear yard, not side. Is the main entrance off of Glen, right?
Yeah.
So then this is not side yard, it's actually rear, as far as how I would interpret it.
Do you, do you think parking spaces one, two, three would be called rear parking?
No, not as I would know. I would think that one, two, and three is, one, two, three, and four, I would actually think is side and more, or, I mean, it's touch and go with four or five. You know, it'd be siding, goes back towards the back too. It's right in the corner, if you will, right? So.
Well, I tend to agree with you. I believe our zoning code labels, um, corner properties as having two front yards.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Side yard, yeah.
I'm on, I'm on a corner. I know, I know. I, I get it.
Isn't this in the, this is a cultural professional too?
Yep.
Which?
Is it central business district?
Is it not central to the, I mean, this is, this is cultural professional. This is section I'm looking.
Yep.
Regarding the parking spread residence, it does not apply to cultural professional.
Oh, that's interesting. Can I ask just a side question about the parking? And I know it's not why you're coming here, it's just a lot of discussion's been about that. The only concern I had about the parking was about an extra runoff and things like that. Is it going to be done in just asphalt? Or are you doing about semi-curbable or curvable paving anyway?
I think the, I think the intention is to asphalt, um, put asphalt on.
So my counter, the, the issue, the immediate issue is the density variance.
Yep.
The parking was reviewed by the planning board in site plan review and granted a variance on one issue. If there is concern over whether an additional parking variance is required, you could certainly clarify our motion, if you were, perhaps a motion to grant the density requirement, that you're just looking at that variance and not intending to inadvertently grant any other variances that may be needed. In which case, the applicant could then meet with the code office to determine whether any of the additional parking rules would need a further variance. But it does appear initially that being a cultural professional is not all the parking requirements you sometimes dealt with apply, where we've got to try here, kind of, there is a part in front of a wrecked house.
But I think it's almost the opposite of that. It's saying required off-street parking shall not be located within required yard areas of office, commercial, and industrial business. And that's what it says.
Which section are you looking at?
I'm at two twenty point two sixteen, I mean, four.
Okay, two twenty one?
Two, two twenty point two six E, and then number four.
But I would still say that in my comment, again, you can handle it however you want. But you could grant this if you're applying to address the density and condition, uh, subject to your other variance if you're granted. Because it is a good concern that if you're intending to grant one variance, but additional ones are needed, that you're not deemed to be granting all of them.
So the density issue is pretty straightforward. We're asking for four apartments, meaning twenty-five hundred square feet an apartment, and that would necessitate ten thousand square feet. And the lot, um, does not have ten thousand square feet. Um, we're seeking relief on density.
So to your point, though, uh, as the parking exists right now, when it was a commercial dealership, it was parking on the side. Correct. Apparently twenty-six. What, so when it was, uh, used as Dr. Coe's office, it was parking these two and three?
Yeah. And, and maybe even, uh, actually two, three, four. And I wouldn't have been surprised if you saw something parked in five, um, which isn't other, anything other than a dirt, dirt area.
But just 'cause it happened doesn't mean it has to continue happening.
Yeah, understandable. You know, looking at new and expanded uses, uh, and what it states with the planning board improvements and weighing that as well, this was taken into consideration by that board as is defined here to determine whether or not it should be granted.
Yeah, on that issue, with respect to any additional parking variances, it would be fair, you'd have a good chance to review that with the code office and determine the code office interpretation and then if a variance is required, then the applicant would have the time, opportunity to come back here prepared for that particular discussion since I'm here on a different variance tonight, not prepared with all the grandfathering history.
Well, looking at the variance request in front of us tonight, um, number two, explain if variance is necessary. It may be necessary to do what the applicant wants to do, but it's not necessary to operate this property or use this property in any way. Um, will it have an adverse or in, or effect on the physical, on the neighborhood? It will certainly change the character of the neighborhood. We're gradually changing things over the historically commercial and office uses into, um.
Could you share that with us, if you didn't serve any use?
I, I don't think it changes the character of the neighborhood because neighborhoods are predominantly apartment.
Some things are, yes, but moving away from Glen Street, moving away from the city, or moving away from downtown, has commercial uses and has been, I mean, sort of changing over.
The, the days of the remodeled office, the old school house remodeled into office are, um, are trending away from that because we're in auto culture. And clearly, a situation like this doesn't have a parking lot to accommodate the office traffic that this space could potentially generate under a different office use. So it would really be, in our estimation, more problematic than, uh, apartment. But I guess, um...
Do you, do you know what, uh, for a typical commercial office, like the doctor's office prior, what the, um, use would be or the intensity of use if it was to remain in a commercial medical?
As it is right now?
As it is right now versus what you're proposing to have two additional apartments with two on top?
That's the other part of the problem. The paradigm has shifted, and the medical healthcare delivery market is no longer serving patients' needs in the small older remodeled house. It is the trend that it is corporate institutional. If you're not, if the doctors aren't working for Hudson Headwaters, they're working for the Glen Falls Hospital, now Albany Med. And I've just seen a, a, a very predominant trend into more institutional healthcare facilities like Hudson Headwaters building, um, these small.
Yeah, I was trying to understand the intensity of the parking use if it was commercial versus the intensity of parking.
Well, yeah, I mean, you have a secretary, you have a doctor, you have patients, at least one or two or three, that are waiting to see the doctor. You might have a, um, a nurse. Um, it all depends on really what kind of practice is in there as to what kind of intensity that current configuration would have. Um, it's, uh, it really all depends on the practice, I guess. But I don't think there's any question that the potential for more parking and the need for more vehicles to utilize this property as constructed currently, it would be a more intense situation, um, on parking. I mean, I think that's a pretty fair argument. It would be, you'd need more parking spaces and more people be parking in the street to go see their doctor. I don't know how they did it before, to be honest, I.
But they park on the street. The only problem is on the floors, but we can't park on the street overnight.
Yeah.
It's gonna even be summer time. It's still, you know, not important, but gotta see that much.
I want to finish my.
Sure.
Um, this is, this is a self-created hardship, right? The pandemic is not a self-created hardship, and you're correct. But the changes, and the changes on the real estate market that the pandemic caused, sure. However, this, this particular request is a self-created hardship.
Do I need to make that argument for density? Is that part of the?
It's, it's, uh, so all area variances that have five questions, it's a balancing test. Certainly, because that is not the deciding factor.
Right.
All five questions need to be weighed against each other.
Yeah. I think the day, the, the environment that we're currently living in has, um, people working from home, you know, there, there's no question, the office market is not, you can't get an economic return out of this building trying to go find a, a medical office tenant. And I would argue, let alone even an office tenant, because the, the parking clearly is inadequate to service most modern office parking requirements. So I think the pandemic has created that hardship more so than ever.
Some new competition, actually, just, uh, one of the market for vacant office space in the corner of Birch and Glen. I, uh, typically take a stroll around the neighborhood for my lunch break, and I go right up and down Glen Street, uh, multiple times a week. I could say that the pandemic has, whether you want to say it's gonna be permanent or not, it's definitely created a shift that I see in my own eyes, and those downstairs offices becoming more, you know, this, um, so.
Yeah, I mean, uh...
I, I tend to agree that there is a, a shift in place, uh, of real shifts.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Is there any comment from the public?
But I'm not being, being involved, something that had controversy.
I mean, I think, uh, you presented a decent argument, uh, in this. I certainly have seen a lot of vacancy in commercial space downtown.
But there's also a lot of regentrification. There's, there's projects going on in the, in the, you know, the commercial, uh, central business district, and things are, I think things are clearly positively trending on a lot of fronts.
And the person purchasing this has a, an interest in Glen Falls?
Yeah, clearly. This is his fourth purchase in two months, and, uh, he's actually looking at more. He, uh, flew up from Florida this weekend. I showed him a, a Glen Street row building, uh, major project, probably a couple million dollars by the time it's all done. And, uh, he just continues to look at opportunities in Glen Falls. Proud to be affiliated with him on his projects. I have no doubt he'll turn this old rotten exterior woodwork into, uh, new and refurbished and period restoration.
Any other questions?
This is unwisest, so you have to conduct a secret.
Okay. So as part of the, uh, secret review, will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No or small impact may occur? Will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of, uh, use of the land? No or a small impact may occur? Will proposed action impair the character or quality of the business community? No or a small impact may occur? Will proposed action have an impact on the environmental factors that cause the establishment of the critical environmental area? No or small impact may occur? Will proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No or small impact may occur? Will proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate, incorporate recently available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No or small impact may occur? Will proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies, public, private waste water treatment utilities? No or small impact may occur? Will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No or small impact may occur? Will proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, waterways, groundwater, air quality, flora, or fauna? No or small impact may occur? Will proposed action result in increase in potential for erosion, flooding, drainage? No or small impact may occur? Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources for human health? No or a small impact may occur?
Yeah, we have the motion. Any other word from, comment on those findings?
Any comment? I'd like to make a motion that in Glen Falls, only for appeal here by accept, accepts lead agency status for applicant for area variance twenty-one dash zero zero four, uh, tax map zero two dot two dash seven dash five, common roads, per lane Glen Street. Owner of the property located at, as I said, four twenty eight Glen Street. The zoning board has determined the action to be unlisted action and has reviewed the short environmental assessment format upon documentation and discussion issued to negative declaration. That is the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Will Paul?
Aye.
I agree.
Aye.
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 I'm a no, because I think the location is incomplete in that we don't know, uh, the side yard parking is permitted or in or grandfathered.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
This was for the seeker.
For seeker, yes.
Yep.
And knowing that there's still question regarding side parking, I think that's something that Chris would have to investigate with the applicant to determine. So that would be addressed at code enforcement first to research within the history. And then if a variance would be needed, the applicant would have to come back to the board for the purposes of the motion this evening. I'd like to make a motion that the Glens Falls zoning board appeals here by grant the application for area variance from project identified as area variance twenty-one dash zero zero four five. Tom Elliott, contract manatee of AGF Associates, owner of tax map, zero two dot two dash seven dash five, common known as four twenty eight Glen Street. At the October eighteenth meeting, uh, the applicant is requesting a lot area coverage variance in the amount of two thousand two hundred and forty-five square feet. Uh, whether or not it's an изменing produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment of our properties, I don't believe it will. Documentation show, the meeting shows, there's a number of multifamily residences, uh, in the immediate surrounding neighborhood. Uh, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by another feasible method. The applicant has proposed adding, uh, two additional apartments or reserve two. And has shown or demonstrated that the commercial market for real estate is not as strong. So it does not seem that it could be achieved by another method. Uh, the area of variance is not, does not seem to be substantial. The requirement is ten thousand, uh, square feet. The proposal will have seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-five. Uh, I do not believe that proposed variance will have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And while this may be self-created with a desire to turn it into, um, multifamily living versus commercial, it really shouldn't preclude the granting of variance. Do I have a second for the variance?
I'll second it.
Second it. Will Paul vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm a no for the same reason that we shouldn't be taking area variances sooner or later, they should be looked at collectively.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
First, you'll meet with him and determine if there's a variation. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the cover eighteen two thousand twenty-one, uh, Glens Falls zoning board appeals. Second, will it favor? Aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
Go home.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.